This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you all for coming to the meeting. We would like to make some special questions for making standing and participating in this meeting. I have my house by house. I have five little babies. We have a lot of space. We have a lot of wishes to ask. One hundred and fifty. And we have a beautiful. Please, Val, if you'd like. By the way, you have to worry because I think the pandemic has produced a lot of plans. He is bigger than the community. He is serving the people. A lot of us have to listen to you guys. We have to trust your mind this morning. By the way, we also want to lift up our friends and partners and the people who care for those who are sick. By the way, we have to do that. Because they are the ones who serve people and they have to allow them to protect them. By the way, he was he was a high school. I stand up here. Yeah. We're going to wrap up at home. And after this, I expect all of our people to keep following these comments as long as necessary for everyone to be able to hear that.
Yes.
We'll go ahead and start by being with citizens concerned on Ivy Town and Ivy City. This is an opportunity for the public to represent the city council about Ivy Town and the citizens. As you heard in the conversation with the public, the city council. Anyone? And this is the mayor, the mayor from right here, if you'd like to. Hey, there is this couple of members in town. We can just find anything to run through with. Thank you, my friend. Thank you. We're the best of all. Now, everybody has a question. By the way, I'm very interested. And that can be the reason you need to start to collect the whole line. But this is not the case yet. I would hope that the city council can also call for the three nobody. Boy, somebody wants. Boy, that's why I left people in favor. The mayor, he can't be. A lot of work can't make it work. Every way, we're all talking. Most of the issues have happened. Thank you, citizens. Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, that's the example. So, citizens are going to be content with this. Since they did this evening, we've been in front of the July 12th Capitol. Playing for city operations, playing for public health operations, and the second quarter of 2020 financial report. It's going to be bold by our people. That. The United States vote, Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve the consent as presented. Question. Do you consider a question? Done totally.
Mayor, the vote is to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thompson? Gurley? Kith? Stevens? Shannon? Mackey? Wood? Reeves? Mayor, the motion passes.
On this, we're going to sit down.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask a question. Excuse myself. I can use myself and also mention I can create and consult my uncle on projects like X input. Whenever the things that are available. Especially with these.
I'll go ahead and introduce our old citizen tonight. The BSC 134, we're covering. Wait. And from that, both of them mentioned a break time. I didn't think of.
Mr. Mayor, to be, uh.
He's going to need to put the chair up also.
Yeah.
He's got to hold it really close, right?
You're going to have to be real.
Right.
I'll go ahead and start. For a reserving of approximately 100 acres. Okay. Southeast order of 10 acres. And take that. I'll go back and I'll go over this. It's suffering to me. And it's located in. A one, moving east, southeast, and north. The subject property is on the same. The proposed law is to try to have the adjustment. The applicant, four year lease, are requesting for the building of the eight acres of the public over any right line. To develop a new business district or group to watch for. Prior to the company operating from over two. There's no additional land to the company. So, I can't see the situation. According to the bar's previous order, the most appropriate yard is suitable for the ability to buy two, having enough facilities. The company makes changes to sleep on site and approve the maintenance shop. Pictures of any industrial requirements, which is pretty fine as soon as we will have the EPA. The subject, the golden order, saying, there are, what is known as the golden stackers. They're used throughout the construction, which is why I think the consideration is going to be quick. And I am looking at them on the staff before. I have plenty of mission staff before. One of them is the staff. Stand on them and keep them in touch and in the balance. First, the neighborhood. The character. And I describe the neighborhood and my business. On the low, on the low, like, uh, I said to me, to the door, take seven. And when it's eight, the property is on the low. The floor of the street. This is the fourth of July. It's about, it is the property of the third person. And it's location. With this, uh, character of the neighborhood, it's difficult for staff to see the neighborhood. The age, business, a lot of different factors. And then, you know, hundreds of feet to shed of the proposed buildings. And the buildings and Wal-Mart and other buildings have a neighborhood. Staff doesn't need a neighborhood. It's not possible, but, but I stand by that. If one of the employees goes deep on, he's surrounded by under the square area, except for the big properties. Do they run the structure on Kansas Avenue? So, one of the other questions, going with you, we just talked about that. And I have a version of. The golden rule that I had a little bit of experience in. Is that the suitability of the subject property for traditional, which is restricted. So currently, it's a horn, that's that. And I came up with, uh, just a few. What was only orders? Uh, commercial forestry, farming, fish farms, orchards, and coal protection. They can also have a little bit of natural or certain. So, the suitability for. Actually, in the area that still has fully the classical ground. Um, if you see the property, there's a lot of speech drop. To, um, pretty decent, you can tell by my tree. I can't see, but it can be used for local use. Um, unless everybody is planning to reinteriorize or go there. Uh, but the problem is, as a speaker, well, is a little bit of property that is more of the east of state seven. And not hybridization direction information about the proposed project. But because staff and other army personnel, I have to take this consideration when speaking the act. The applicant has made commitments to build 129 streets from the city's standpoint, which is set to the Wiggles Center. To the north, to, you know, to Beagle Road. Beagle Road will also be developed. With that. Free to be built to the city's level. It would not support that for older residents or, you know, the truck. It would be for access for the community, such as all the way. For the eight to eleven block. The capital has committed to adding. So that they can use for, you know, the city, like, appropriate commercials, details, um, things along that line. I know for certain that. The space to the east of state seven, which likely may undeveloped because of 129 straight stations is really expensive. I had really worked on what the, um, what the figures, yeah, is about. The, I don't know, it's less than Manhattan last. And when it falls across the curve. It has crossed the curve eighty inches, three thousand dollars. That's what, let's just say, to be compensated. But if we're, if we're three, two inches, five quarters, we get one hundred and eight, that's one dollar. So, I'm mentioning the committee that they may make a camp not included in the section, the regulations and the golden rule. So, the next question says, is extent with removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property? So, the point that I ask for the council to spend is to focus on staff and on fear. The joint ordinance has guidelines for usage. That that traffic, stormwater, variety of regulations will have to be addressed. And. The neighboring parts property, will they be aware that it's there? Absolutely. What the people don't think that's the thing from the other page, and I just think from the capital, I just think it would be detrimental to the use of residents who are watching this avenue. I think it would be a pushing for the commercial property on a city on three. And, uh, it was obviously the open rate line that is. Um, the latest time, the subject property has been made vacant as of. But as of my knowledge, it's always been known A1, what some will know as. And, uh, the current owner has kept the property since 2005. And there have been some inquiries, but no offers. So, you know, fifteen years, basically, with the exception of the cancer that has been seen. And when that leaves, it's fired, the owner will move the building and accept the music. Fifteen years of warranty. And. I think fifteen years would be unusable considering for development without some nice things in the north. Again, we have a little bit of gains with coastal, safety, roll fair, as compared to loss of value with a hardship imposed on capital. So what I'm asking for a council to look at is appropriate right to use the same value versus the responsibility that you have to your citizens. Again, how to turn out their emergency in place to relinquish the city board of net effects to the major. A big associate on the statement that the owner should have the right to sell the property. Um, and pay money for fifteen year basic rent. Okay. The next one is. Influence of request of change to be adopted or recognized off of meeting plan. We do have a conference of plans that one of the previous reviews in 2008. Uh, that's the end of, that should be, you know, this year, actually, but. You don't want to finish the budget, you know, that's not up to next year. So, I think they're saying not super up to date. Uh, also, conference of plans, as important as they are, and as they always should be, are flexible, they're not. Nor do they have any more weight than other golden stackers. Also, I think it's important that I plan on that. That to itself was unfamiliar that in the past, according. Was what were made, that there's a change to the future landing plan. I saw a practice I'd ever seen. I didn't understand it. And I failed the applicant in not creating that change to the future land request. All right. We can pass the question about the new facility. There are, you know, the applicant or the shelter will apply, you know, traffic and force, performance of teaching days. I think that, uh, what studies are not always under way will be provided strongly. Um, when you. On this one, we have the opposition for support of neighbor discussions. Again, this is a neighbor's question. And consideration on basically allowing standard company residents to be the neighbor. And we mentioned that of the property, since there's decisions filed, uh, following the second commissioning. And, um, I'm sure there are people trying to vote on the board and oppose the project. And then there's last one. And this one is no longer important than the other, but I believe respectfully, it should be considered as a representation of the special debt. It is not a special movement, based on my education, there is, uh, fifteen years, that the reserving application be approved. That's what I think.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. In light of the funding to be, as far as with our new project, uh, that we have to be, where this is not too much of a public hearing. At the time of the judge, we will now be going ahead and moving. The question is on now, everyone here is concerned about it. We'll not have, um, particularly for either the top or the concerns to have come along at this time, but I go ahead and take a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I submit the motion to approve of ordinance, BSC dash 1.4, the design part specific, major, at 12900 Speaker Road. 12901 Speaker Road and 449 South, uh, 3300, it's Kansas, from A1, technical district, to I2, 1700.
Senator.
Senator. I will start with questions, comments, and concerns from the council. Councilor Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Everybody, thank you very much for being here. Please, the students, I. Over the course of the last four or five days, like everybody else, I have their approach, and we're doing, and emails, letters, et cetera. Uh, one of the, a couple of the things that were mostly dominant, I was approached personally about this, was traffic, noise, and progress. Uh, so, uh, I would like to address these. But I do want everybody to know. I am not looking at the court, I am looking at facts. Facts, I, I have aligned the best of the good, and I feel like every bit of what I can possibly add. That you may be interested in, but I do want you to know that what I've told, what I've said here is. Um, in traffic, um, and I pulled a little bit from, what was discussed by the zoning meetings, that everybody's had a chance to read. Mr. White, I represent the advocate, uh, said that there is 150 trucks in, 150 out. And sixty-five percent go east, thirty-five percent go west. Um, the question that I have was, the percentages define the regional kindergarten chart. Um, Mr. White, could you explain how many trucks per hour go east, how many go west in twenty-four hours? Kind of like how to dispatch, um, you know, what times, et cetera.
Third one. As we explained in planning commission, we anticipate 300 total truck movements. Each facility, this one in particular, operates with two operations. One is called Lime Hall, takes products all over the nation. Uh, Lime Hall, which takes over a twenty-four hour period, that comprises 200 of the 300 day movement. Pickup and delivery is the other primary operation. That's distribution, local goods, pickup of those goods, and bringing those back to the terminal. Those can constitute 100 of the 300 movement. Uh, as far as trucks for hours, uh, pickup and delivery will be the most invested, where maybe up to the fifty outbound, so fifty outbound, fifty and down pickup. Fifty outbound would be over several hours in the morning. So we might anticipate fifteen trucks per hour, maybe, maybe up to twenty in peak operation. It would be sustained in the evening when the trucks return. Will return over several hours. Uh, this peak movement, although I described it as peak for only the main freight lines, we don't operate on normal peak hours. So, a normal peak hour, maybe considered morning rush hour, where people are coming to work, arriving to work. But even during our peak operations, we'll be dispatching off peak. That's how we describe it. So, although we may generate fifteen trucks per hour, uh, that's not during normal peak hours traffic. Always with staggered hours over the twenty-four hour period as well. Shop workers will come at a different time than the dock workers. Uh, it's a very efficient operation, and it's set up to minimize the impact on the local community as well as the overall.
So another was possibly fifteen trucks per hour, a second hour of fifty-five, three, twelve, whatever. It's trying to do, it's trying to provide twenty-four hours, depending on the trucks.
Yeah, I think three, three hundred divided by twenty-four hours would be a hundred percent. The question, uh, is that.
Twelve twenty-five.
Well, well, but.
Okay, yeah. So another was correct to say is that they come and go with different, different hours, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
Great. How was the current decision?
How was it this that? So, uh, in, so we're talking about the movement, the trucks are loaded overnight. Uh, and then once they're loaded, the driver will arrive. And it's kind of good, uh, within it as well. The truck get loaded, the driver arrives, and then they get this that. So they just get sent half, uh, the day it was loaded, um, and it's.
Okay, so, uh, because I know this is east, when somebody mentioned traffic, the first thing I thought. I mean, trucks, you know, J seven, you know, stuff like that. And then when I looked at it, it tried to get a tax, and it was, no, most of them go east and west. Your local deliveries, I think, go all four directions. I don't know.
Yes, sir. So, some traffic will be going on state seven, but it would be in it. And it really depends on the hours. Some operators who did that, what traffic is, this way is. Uh, yeah, well, I'm saying to you, primary, primary traffic. This, this, uh, uh, was a unique day where we had a red test to a signalized intersection, I think. Our topic is that, we had the red test. From the, the red test, it's on the east side. For outbound movement, outbound movement, I can be less than, we can utilize, they said, only to access the offering, thus an order. All inbound travel from my seven will come through that signalized intersection. And those, none of the traffic, of that, of the inbound, often, they said. This will be on.
Great. Thank you. Senator, it's, um, people approached me on, which I thought was, by the way, are you still with questions? Last week, Brett. Uh, they also mentioned dogs, and I'm like, oh, how can I get a dog for what they're asking? And the only way I can do that was, I'm going to go to the, you have to fill five different times, hold five hours. I met him morning, in the, uh, morning, I went to the lab, I went to the lab. I met in the morning, in the, uh, the morning, I went, a little later, a little later, it didn't really, I'm sitting down, but I wanted to hear, I wanted to find out, did I hear any local base? Yes. I hope to, if they feel at all, for the day, did I hear any pieces, one time? This is the, this is, is what I heard. Um, I stand in the middle part, to approximately fifteen feet away from their, uh, loading docks, uh, the end, and the truck move, all I heard, I think, there are seamless, just the noise, um, just trying to think whether, did you hear the truck move a line when I made here, the truck backed up? I heard that, uh, where it was named, stated, uh, doesn't, these more, buckle, what I heard, I'm seeing is buckle, and that was, that was, it was a couple seconds, this is done. So again, I think this is right, but that did not satisfy me, as I think, that's, no, that's in the year to be over, somebody else may feel, well, this, yes, I, I didn't understand it. I went to Speaker, they came out, three times, most of the three hours, I was there this morning, I was there Sunday evening, I was there, time to set it, but, you know, um, what I found on K seven was constant, consistent noise, traffic. Um, in twenty seventeen, K dot, K seven, traffic seven, makes public in twenty eighteen, K seven has twenty-four thousand one hundred cars per truck, by seven, west of K seven, has thirty-three thousand four hundred cars per truck, per one, wow. I seven east of K seven has fifty-one thousand eight hundred cars per truck, per twenty-four. Kansas seven, east of K seven between K seven and Alhorne, has three thousand three hundred eighty cars. When I take a look at that, and I looked at what the person that asked, regardless of noise, I think it was pretty much something explained to me. I am not offering my opinion, but I did know it's constant, traffic noise, cars, trucks, motorcycles, et cetera, on I seven, K seven. Another person asked me regarding a property tax, and I think that this is, this is the big, and I, I was, great question, of me. The, uh, annual property collection for taxi identity, what happens if it's state, county, city, midtown, school district? Um, last year, evidence that Old Dominion gave us for, for taxi identity is two hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred and three thousand, eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, in our school district here, in our area. If Old Dominion, thanks to BONER, uh, based on the appraised value of over six million, almost seven million dollars in the first year, BONER will be able to recognize three hundred eighty thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. The benefit to BONER, this key was, was the big one, the benefit to BONER was maybe this two, eighty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-seven, that eighty-eight thousand isn't included in nine thousand eight hundred dollars, that we're getting from, um, the property up there, right now. This is the one I love most. Our school district will realize one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety, but the Old Dominion was here, totaling two hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. Now, on the negative side, if Old Dominion leaves that, it goes directly down to the registry department. For those of you who don't know what the registry department is, it's lower the bridge, or however, if you get down the signal, go this whole thing on your left, you'll go straight to this on your right, you may have a path round, if you're going to go out there, that includes the part, that's it, man. If they go, uh, down there, when you want to assist to the taxi identity, uh, when the KCK entity, Collins County, at USB two oh four, they will lose a hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. Our school district loses all the money now. The other thing that, when people are talking about traffic and noise, and I, that, yeah, people, great questions, and they deep thought, all of their trucks, you locate them, all of their trucks, you get them right on, all this stuff, and everybody is saying, we don't want all the tracks, we don't want them to explode, guess what? Now, the positive side, this is an approximately forty-five billion dollar project. I don't know of any community that would not like that, but, you know, a hundred and twenty-nine street, as Mrs. Fine stated, uh, will be put in with all utilities, no expense on. Now, a hundred and twenty-nine stated, maybe you're with it, I'm putting on something that's, that's in street, something between Walgreens, and bottles of, burger thing, and they will, I would think, good ones, something, et cetera. Uh, I checked with our city manager, Mr. Peterson, uh, the other day, and I said, if he were to put that street in, approximately, what would it cost us? And he gave me, you know, a lot of, up to there, approximately, three quarters of a million dollars. Only maybe this twenty million force, it works next to you, as Mrs. Fine stated too, a lot of the time, I thought when this first team of highlights had everything, and the terminal's gonna be right next to this car, it's gonna be east of the road, what is gonna be between that road and seven, or K seven, is ten point eight acres, protego pass, that's the end, that's on, and it remains eligible, it is not part of the chain. And now, as Paul already says, and now the rest of the story, we have had, and we all step, one thing, one thing important to come to our business, one thing to change, Old Dominion is thirty-three hundred employees, three hundred, you're existing company, energy bill, there's two hundred employees right there. Um, again, I really think all of you are big here, I know it's difficult, it's never, it's never easy, uh, there's joys and there's concern, but I do thank you for being here, thank you.
I'm trying to cover, uh, what, um, some stuff about, I haven't, uh, you know, some turned out, some, uh, we go home. One, I just want to tack on before I start in, uh, start, uh, just to add, right now, Old Dominion is paying, the twenty seventeen, Old Dominion paid two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in property tax, with one before eight. In two thousand and eighteen, they paid two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the twenty-four eight. In twenty nineteen, they paid two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for the twenty-four eight. Um, that's two hundred and twenty-nine thousand per year, in the average. Now, as I was reading through this material right now, Mr. White, uh, Old Dominion is looking at developing approximately thirty-seven, not the whole seven, is that correct?
Yes, sir, uh, in, in the initial phase for foreseeable future, we are only, uh, going to be developing that northern half, uh, everything will be graded, the entire site will be graded, so the roads are in place, and everything's set for long term, uh, but yes, at this time, it's just the northern portion of it.
Okay, so thirty, thirty-five acres?
Uh, I have to, I have to do, they got, but that's not covered.
Yeah, we'll use that, I think it's a lot slower. So in thirty, and that's why I count, should be why I count paying the tax, right? So in thirty-five acres, oh, I know what it is, uh, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, on the average, per year, was the paying, why not count it, property tax, divided by forty-four eight, which is nine thousand five hundred and forty-two per eight, if you take that number times, seven, you, that'd give you six hundred, uh, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, but right now, you're only going to do thirty-five acres, thirty-five, times nine thousand five hundred and forty-two, it's three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. That's what they're paying right now. So I want to add that too, if you were saying, who pushed that, if they do it in Chonine, that's going to be Chonine, we get the truck there. Now, I found it from a different way on the traffic standpoint, uh, you have approximately two-thirds of all your trucks are line haul and break haul, and they go east and west, on and off the island, so a little over two-thirds, 'cause even some of the local pickup, I would think, would get on seventy.
Yes, sir.
If you go to Chonine, what's your policies on off, were those two-thirds of that traffic?
Take that in, I guess.
So one hundred percent of the three hundred truck movements, it comes from the river to I seven, and we can deal with a hundred percent, no matter what time of day they came through, we'll deal with a hundred percent of the problem, but if not, then it would be just, a little over two-thirds, would just be a dead end.
Yes, sir, that's the correct generalization, some minor traffic may have to go down.
Oh, sure. Yeah, when I said a little over, a lot of the, you know, if I was a truck driver on this, probably could do a local delivery, and, um, start performance down on a hundred first and, uh, light, but Santa Ex, it's, uh, Santa Fe Drive, on their own, I don't think I go south and, uh.
Correct.
I get on seventy, four thirty-five, south thirty-five, and you like.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, yeah, yes, sir.
That's why I came up with the generalization, one, for the local, um, okay, sure. I do, and I think we all probably be saying this, is we have a responsibility to the citizens to do it. So, I'm looking back, and the facts are based on the eight factors, the golden factor, now if you're not familiar with the golden factor, they think now, the state of Kansas has just, I'm gonna say it, well, the, uh.
Supreme Court? Supreme Court.
The Supreme Court of Kansas, here, here, right here, in nineteen seventy-seven, they made the Supreme Court of Kansas hand down a decision, in the Golden versus State of Golden Park, they said establish the basis for considering reaching a decision on zoning change. This is all the citizens, the cities, the Kansas, that's this, we got. So, my ownership, fact, you announce them all, these, these factors, you make Golden fact, they are golden, like the golden roads, the golden, and so, first of all, uh, that's how it started, so, uh, Sean, that's a question for you, um, in a letter I received from Mr. Chamberlain, in fact, this is the Paul Jackson, so this was the public letter, and then I received a letter from Mr. Chamberlain, and in that letter, it talked about, um, the Paul Jackson, in, uh. And, um, I don't see any lines on this one. What we do know, this is out of the, I was like, what we do know is that the Old Dominion proposal is not compatible with the K seven quarter, and the K dot finally has funding to finish building. And then the letter that I received, he says, first, the buyer knew when the property was acquired, that no commercial development would occur until the K seven corridor improvements are completed, the final phase of that work will soon commence. Have we missed something as the city council? The last three hundred was about a year ago, said that the plans have been shelved, there is no funding, is there something new on the table that we're not aware of as a council?
Not at this time, no, the K seven plan that was proposed, um, some time ago, there was an MOU that was, had several cities along the K seven corridor, that MOU has lapsed a couple of years ago now, uh, I can tell you that, um, one of the ideas of the K seven plan was to have an elevated highway, of K seven all the way from Aleca up to Leavenworth. Uh, I, I think that the idea of that took a pretty significant blow, K dot approving the state, approved it funding for Forty Second Street, down Shawnee with the industrial park, planned in Shawnee, to actually keep that path great, but the idea, again, of having it elevated, so the super highway, it was probably, um, again, took a little bit of a hit, um, with, with that project.
Okay, the reason I'm reading that up is because there are, um, several arguments used that, uh, we should not take, but the last part it said was jump on the first proposal, and the way it's being presented in some of the documents that I've received and read is that, uh, uh, commercial development will take place when this happens, there's no guarantee, it's data, things coming in any fashion, so let's talk about that.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding, and that this is from talking with K dot, that they have a, a large amount of projects that are, that were unfunded over the last several years, and they put a lot of investment in the K seven today, however, um, they were quick to qualify that there are other projects that have not had similar investments that they need to be, um, concerned about beyond, again, K seven at this time.
The other thing that, uh, I have found, as I go through all the letters, and it's like what it says, we do appreciate you, uh, and, uh, we can try to listen and look at each one, uh, look at the information, but I have to like the fact, and, uh, one of the things that, uh, I found in this, in, each one, almost all of the letters referred to the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan was presented as something that we must follow, a questioning use, the comprehensive plan, we were fine free around that, and it's not a problem, I don't know who's, or is it twice?
I think it says, um, as fine noted earlier, that it is, it is intended to be a guy, um, or, it's not, I think, so flexible, so, it's not to be flexible.
In the notes to the planning and zoning commission, we looked for that, uh, maybe in sixteen, Frank Stevens, um, who was a busy partner, and this plan was the one in Noe, and stopping the virus system, and, and a long year, towards the end, the program of, we're working on this, and we do talk about five years of compensation.
I think the, the only revision that, um, that I'm aware of, off of my head, is the inclusion of the K thirty-two, Tri-City, multi-nothing. Tri-City Multimodal Development Plan, the bond, um, that was included as a mix back of the top of my head.
Mr. Stevens commented that it is a different thing, uh, uh, he wrote a comment about the comprehensive plan, he sat on the planning mission and board voted to approve. He stated the comprehensive plan was a plan. It's an ideal, it's more like a guideline. Mr. Stevens explained that the board members approved plan based on what was perceived by what they saw at that time. He said that it does not reflect what we have to be now. It's what we thought we should do in 2008. He continued that, uh, stating that things changed in 2004. And this is a part of it, I'll come back to it. And Mr. Stevens concluded that by stating that the comprehensive plan is changed and should act as guideline. He said that much thought remained to what it wants and what we thought might work best, but it is not set in stone. And this is also not military doctrine. I understand about interstate and things like that, that even with military doctrine, in spite of the interstate, I'm shooting well, I carried a 60, and I was missing target, the federal agency target. But this is not a law. The only closest this comes to, um, uh, military operation. So the comprehensive plan is out of the room here, it's very accessible. So it's not a law, a rule, and number eight of the golden factors. Does the request agree with the adopted plan recommendations? If not, is the plan outdated, or are there mitigating circumstances which speak to the non-alien? And I think the concept that says it does. What I found was, um, and as I look through everything, um, the same concerns. Now, he said, Mike, because they're the same concern. But what I found was that it was exaggeration built on exaggeration built on exaggeration. And there were no facts involved. Here's an example of two different letters, one is the, uh, one I've already referred to. The amount of diesel exhaust generated by that facility should suffice to keep the neighborhood situated, we're getting the golden here. Suffice to keep the neighbor's indoor more effectively what was really important than any prior pandemic. How do you, how do you find out, how do you find out facts about that? Call the EPA. I called them in and worked the EPA, they knew, and they worked for 30 years, just retired. So I'll call a friend of mine, divorced it, who has since been in the world. He said that in recent years, I mean, one was in 2017, and then there's others, they go back to our 2008, but there have been environmental studies, EPA studies, you can find this information on the EPA website. But what they look for is diesel fuel, diesel dollars that is different than auto fuel. Diesel has particulate, it's carbon that's suspended in the air, that's what makes it so bad. There were two studies that were done. One was in the yards, the diesel shop in Argentina. That's the one where all the diesel engines are hooked together, and they're sitting there running, and smoke coming out of smokestacks. These two yards into the other. The hump yard there, 40, uh, 430, uh, 435. So all those yards, they did a study there, and then they did a study in the intermodal yard, garden. The Edgar, the garden promoter, he got out, I believe, and sort of went out Edgar. And gardeners still deal with the truck track, I believe, I have, I don't remember the fact about. But, uh, they did this study, and what the study found is that there was, uh, almost, he said it was well below, the results were well below the, um, EPA standard. The air quality was well below EPA standard. If a business is above the standard, they're required to get a permit. Neither one of the boroughs, Juicy City or Burlington Northern, required to get a permit. Uh, those that will look up, I can find a whole bunch of studies, should I have to study for the one in Argentina? There was a community study, and the people didn't fire it, there were little sensors like watch bottles, there were sensors in the back there. It was pretty strange. He said that 300 truck movements, that's nothing. It's nothing compared to the study that they did in Argentina and the results in Argentina for the intermodal. The other thing that I wanted to look at too, as I was going through here, is private state with the golden factor. And one of the things that I'm aware of, how that's really affected by profit. And, uh, one of the arguments was, uh, or one of the concerns was, uh, in lower property value. An industrial site with lower property value, how? Mr. McFarley during that meeting stated in his opinion that the suburban site would lower property value. So again, I got to go on the fact. So one of the facts, fell on public record, I looked at Mr. Stevens before, and, uh, with the commercial section, it's far, property value continues to drop. I looked at my property, the two things, the value is, it continues to drop. I looked at the next door property, it continues to drop. I looked at the industrial, I mean, it's on public record, uh, I looked at an industrial park in Bonner, the bakery down on 138 and, uh, K-32. Uh, what's happening is that? Back to industrial. Just north of there, across the street, there's a piece of property. I looked at that, the value is still going up. The value is still going up. Uh, that bakery also has an iron fabrication plant on the south side. I looked at the property north of that corner, its value is still farming. Property value is going up, I'll always, no matter what's new. So I go to the road on Woodmont, I put the first upstairs, I look, this property value is still continuing to drop. It's industrial, sort of misses industrial. I went across the street, uh, Frank, the first, yeah, there, it's still going up. The other fact that I seen is, uh, there was a picture of the Tennessee company with, um, residential alongside it. Can't imagine that's still being here, it wasn't working. Do you know anything about that, Mr. McFarley, on, uh, in that stuff? And that, now, even though I like seeing where you're at too, but there was, uh, uh, we're talking about, uh, the market complex next to the one, and it was still active.
Yes, sir, that, that is actually, uh, from both the, uh, the one and the one. Uh, the developer built apartments, correctly, to the existing open area. So the Memphis facility, uh, there was a fellow that presented a claim to mention, uh, we don't protect like, that facility is still adjacent to a neighborhood. Uh, with many residences, you can't see the residents, but, and yet, it's all, uh, odd and official, uh, LED full cut-off fixtures. We don't protect like, uh, across the property.
So there's a question, at least, you can't better than, picture that, if you're hearing about the apartment company, better than the state. Because there's, I'm scared, and, uh, it's safe, and they're very, I very moved, but, uh, I can't quote them. Then a couple of other things I looked at is, uh, I was aware also in the next, the 435 came from the east, ended, just on the west side of I-35. And the big thing to do of, uh, foundation, if you had a foundation, it was, uh, funding, you'd be able to see, you'd be grung, it's living off the internet. And, uh, but what you do is when you step there, you look, you look west, and nothing but farming. Now, picture yourself at Lightman Road, standing on 435 and Hocking West. What is, one thing is, two things you see. I saw property, I saw residential areas, I saw, and then I saw to the left, they were building the J.C. Penney warehouse that brought in about 300 people. And it was right there, I mean, it was like the Riviera Palace, the Palace, the Crystal Palace, I mean, it was like, look at it. 435 buzzing behind me, and, uh, it was a gateway, delicate for medicine. I can't imagine trying to buy a house there now with a property, let's just say, so I can't face my little man. But I do put some stock in what I see one next to now. And they have industrial, traditional hallways. So, based on a few facts that I've found, I can feel that it would not lower the budget. Now, as far as traffic? All right, we talked about the different numbers, the two thirds and the big stuff. I thought it was interesting that, um, Mrs. Ralph explained that she is from Boston Springs and had recently returned home to her. Uh, she stated she worked for transportation, um, she explained that she brings a unique perspective to our community as someone who is invested in future Boston Springs as well as investment in transportation. Okay, that adds a little bit, uh, to her opinion. But what she said was, she continues discussing the number one concern in every decision made in transportation, and that is safety. There is safety focus on decisions. And she said later, she said, this is the safest, let this spot, is the safest access point I've ever seen. Now, of course, that's her opinion. But one of the things on the, uh, golden factor, relative danger, public health, safety, welfare, and the construction value, this property was prepared for hardship, um, with the, 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 the. The protection of public health and safety and welfare, the basis of that. The, the relationship between the property owner's rights to use and paying taxes for their property, and the city's responsibility, uh, to the citizens, if you like, so we have a responsibility to do it. And I think that there exists, and it goes south, and we have, we do a hundred percent of traffic, I think, uh, dangers to all the trucks on the road, a hundred percent of them, and this is that answer. I too went down there, I sent a hot bike tour to a little melting oven, decent place, and I heard people screaming tires, and I fanned out of the road for, went down, um, Tom and Hunter Gates, four of them. There's some smart guys there, they're doing donuts, I'm hearing this, now I, I'm, I tell you, I couldn't ignore it, this guy going down the street, this guy in the road, starting out of the radio, and everyone, everybody listens, so, I can't hear everything. And I told my wife, I said, let's go, and, uh, let's go to the open committee, nine o'clock at night. It was serene, I'm not a jester, it was quiet, it was 90% or more quieter than on my report. I got to listen to bands downtown, all of it. So, uh, also, we were on with the, uh, the emissions control, uh, uh, the trucks, I think you said, were, uh, California. They were up, California's had various, Ohio, uh, except for the EPA.
Yes, sir, the tires wouldn't, uh, that's not California.
And the reason, and I'm fact-checking now, to get up to that, uh, time following, it was, uh, the, uh, the reason emissions as well, and we'll go back to this particular, is that, has anybody heard of, uh, DEF? You know what DEF is, what that stands for? That is, it's diesel emission liquid. Uh, diesel emissions fluid. And the diesels now have to have these box on, this is what makes diesel so expensive, that they all exhaust is pushed through. The, uh, the, the EPA said that the technology has changed so much, this up there would not be a thing, truck coming. Those numbers of truck moved, not the number of trucks, moved. It's not that big of a difference. One of the things that, uh, this, we saw in on this, uh, in the work that I did, I learned that when there's an elevated response, and I first saw that as possible was happening, saw an elevated emotional, an elevated grief response, there was something else going on. And then I learned that it doesn't have to be just grief, it has to do with anything emotional, and anything to do with people. And one of the things I've noticed in the, uh, the letters and the phone calls was the emotion, this thing is bigger than city hall. This thing, what you may know, this, this is growing with something huge, this has a life of its own. I, you're definitely based on my 35 years of experience with this kind of stuff. There's a lot of emotions here, I'm seeing the same question. Not the same concern, but exactly verbatim the same question, based on Ted Gray's, one of the, like, the, uh, keep so many people inside worse than half of them. And so I'm thinking, what is going on here? Why is this so big? Since the minutes of July 1988, 1991, Mr. Chamberlain said they took light first confusion on the west 8.48 because they wanted to control the use of the adjacent property. Mr. Chandler said they took light first from fusil in the west eight point four eight because they wanted to control the use of the adjacent property because they have a substantial investment in what for them is a nice home. I can't blame the person for that. They were concerned about the surrounding development, they knew immediately that they said that Conway County was going to do a commercial, it should. The plan published by this group upon which he testified in their lives showed six hundred feet of dead commercial development, which doesn't come near the park. Six hundred feet is approximately the front of, um, Goodwill. A row of empty increase in the windbreak to take care of everything from over there, from a normal acceptable commercial use in that site and depth. We live a thousand, I think, off case seven. Now, the lawyer said that it was one third, six hundred is not one third of a thousand. But as council members, we have a responsibility to, to the safety, we have a responsibility to surrounding landlord, we have a responsibility in taking security, that's why we overlook the facts. We also have a responsibility to other surrounding landlord. And they have a, like, as long as it's within the region, we have to protect, we did a similar planning in selling situation like that. We have to protect the right of the other landlord. And there's a lot of opinion, and based as much as I could on fact, as I looked at the unpaid response, I think it was, it came out, these are the minutes of planning and selling, being in July nineteen ninety-nine. Sit down, uh, because you're more than I should, or I think I'm.
I'll just teach you, boy. You are, I, there's so many saying, oh, but it ruins the vision, people coming into Boss Springs. And you know what, I know, sir, uh, with virtue of change, like this year, two years. And I worry for this guy, and this guy is, he's very too, so friendly, and still, I know, you know, it's fine. It's grown, it's grown, but there's still cars, there's still things along there, and it's putting people one hundred percent in it. And I would say, oh, there's, uh, and there's, uh, and there's, uh, and it will happen, it will be all right. Okay, oh.
Yes, so, uh, there's a, we don't control the breaking all along case seven. It's easy to burn. It's easy to plant trees. We have a, we have speaker road, the realignment, that's a burn. Really, the only visibility you may have is from the intersection of case seven of speaker road, and it's easy to plant. And hide the facility. Uh, no, no, after this waste concerns at all, there will be fuel, that's through above ground storage thing. Everything will be EPA, state, federal, local state. Uh, there's no concern for pollution right now. It's a trip either out or into the facility. Uh, there will be doubles, triggers is, there will make the, make trouble, I forget what the percentage is, but it's extremely, it's, it doesn't handle a lot of things.
More of you, yourself, so. Um, the light could be, say, there'd be some kind of, uh, direct.
Uh, yes, sir, they described as full cutoff fixtures. Uh, so there's a shield on the light that just projects the light to the ground, and it could be focused. They're set along the perimeter of the property, but they're, they're set to light the interior, and, and not, not bleed over the property. So there's an existing burn there, but that can all be improved. Uh, you know, during the design process, it's, it's, they improve that burn, or add evergreen, uh, you know, screening, those, uh, those items can easily be addressed through the design. Uh, the setback, I don't know exactly what the distance is off of case seven, uh, I have to deal with all the points. But from the edge of the road, it's, so it's probably at least, from the edge of the road, it's probably at least a hundred twenty feet, maybe more from the edge of case seven. Correct, this is actually, like, if you look, uh, at the concept plan, you can see a line of, uh, sparse shrubbery that, that, that kind of follows outside the property, that's the distant burn, uh, that's in place now, but we can certainly improve that. So, what I can say is that we are absolutely committed to working with the city to see that the developers' interest, uh, there's the city field's interest, uh, we've actually received some interest, uh, from some commercial users already. Uh, it's, it's hard to exactly describe how that process will play out, but we're committed to working, you know, hand in hand with the city to see that, that gets the, the developers' perspective.
No, it's, yeah.
Yeah, correct, they're going to be graded and tracked now. Yeah, in one twenty-nine, they'll be ready for development, but really, as the users provide interest to development, they're good for. Uh, no, no one said to.
It goes to West Mission Creek, which runs along case seven, not to be confused with East Mission Creek, which is what comes off of the Speedway, legend from that, eventually does some delay chorus, um, so that they're two separate, I think he's done a stormwater.
Correct, there's three pools of discharge, al- along the property line, there's a, there's a string at the back that is, that, uh, they've gone off, there's, there's, there's one in the middle. That runoff, uh, will actually be eliminated, that's probably, um, completely reduced, almost to zero, and the southern runoff. Uh, every, everything, the northern and the southern portion will be contained, uh, will satisfy all, you know, local, state, federal regulations. Will reduce runoff from the two ten, one five, fifty, and a hundred percent of that. Will be collecting the first one point two inches of rainfall, will reduce that over forty hours period.
We, we have a requirement that they have to, as part of, uh, part of this whole process, one, they have to submit a site and landscape plan, which gets into a lot of the questions related to, um, the concerns of, uh, visibility. Um, the, the other part of that is a stormwater plan, they have to submit a stormwater plan, and the requirements of that are that they actually have to reduce the flow rate from what it is existing, so again, this is agricultural ground right now. The, the amount of water, um, would have to go at a lower rate into East Mission Creek than what it is presently. That is a requirement under our, um, our guidelines. West Mission Creek, excuse me, yes, sorry. No, I think, I think Mr. Pope had a letter as well to kind of address that from his standpoint, and I, I do not believe there's been any, um, anything presented to the city since at least two thousand and five to develop that property.
Yeah, I think the supplement has not been, uh, I think it was extremely difficult for me to make this map, to, to, to draw. And I might ask, how many of the figures on it could be stripped of the gap?
So, uh, I didn't include in that, anything I wondered, but in particular order, normally, just go with what seems to be one to I two. Or does this part which is done, in this particular, after I told the applicant, make sure that my thought would be acceptable, I put in a revisionary law so that if the old man's in the room, and the woman does help, they'll have to acquire a building permit within one year, or else the building returns back to I one. Even if the woman is in problem, that revisionary clause is in place. So, uh, that, I thought of that was one thing that would hopefully address the concerns that citizens have about. So if they back out, well, maybe it might become too terrible. But so that's a, those concerns are what will be, the revisionary law, maybe the only, upon the court, a building permit within one year of the order's opened with that.
The reason I had, um, this file, uh, explaining to you, is I think it's extremely important piece that was happening, why probably would have a really different attitude up here. Um, during the planning mission, we, potentially both on a, we go here, parts, as well as he confirmed with somebody else, he talked about it, uh, about, about the, uh, I, in, he said, I two, and should they consider overmain, uh, when they make that decision? He said, no. And meanwhile, it's likely correct in that the I two will change, it changed to I two, it's trans, and it will, it will continue to be I two whether it's developed by ownership or not. But the important now is with this being revisionary, everything that is going to happen in the future, hopefully, then be used as the reason why it should not be approved. Because if they don't move forward for any reason, it doesn't stay I two for some other essential entity that we don't want there, such as the primary plan, outfit plan, so. So it's an important piece that, uh, that I think can sacrifice that, and I appreciate it. Um, we talked about how this plan, and I was brought up, and I find connection. During the course, there are pieces like cherry pick, we describe to you three, uh, look for their position, where anybody's position of trying to build it themselves. Then I'm going to read other pieces out of the papers, rather than everybody actually reading, checking one other part of the book. The first one is, long range in nature. The plan is intended to be a source of protection and guidance for the entire entity, rather than it's can be a future development of the city. Another one, that I think is very important, is in considering a residual request, state statute is required to review the application relation to, and then, then quotes, maximum de consent, then quote, the zone regulation. These considerations should include review the application's consistency with comprehensive. Although the city is not required to follow the plan's recommendations regarding future land use, states and statutes specifically providing a zoning request of consistent plan are presumed to be reasonable. And what it's saying is it's not that you deny someone because it's a man with a future land use plan, it's saying that those are the weak of your future land use plan, if it moves in a sudden expedited way, where something that is not, that's not the future land use plan, it's still being considered, but there is a little bit higher. So I apologize to them, but I just felt like people were recognizing the comprehensive plan is the particular part. Um, the, um, I have a question with Mr. Hoyt. When you talk about load, what is considered the area of load? How far does this range?
Uh, I can, I can probably.
You've been acting, but.
Chris, Chris Callan, who is the regional president of Mason Edwardville, who might be that suited.
Certainly, we might. Thank you for your time, I'm Chris Callan, legal advisor to the state of Edwardville, I've been here since, uh, looking during the pandemic. From a local operator here in the Kansas City metro area, we have a facility in Puma, there's two, uh, facility in St. Joe, one in Columbia, and one down in Carson City. So this facility services the Kansas City metro, uh, does not go very far west, obviously, because of, uh, these are very common, uh, built, uh, finance assistance into the metro area, down to, I forgot my name, sound, uh, down there's the bill to.
Yes, I appreciate that, I think I can, at least I thought that, uh, is that when we're talking, I can, with that local area, it's, it's failing, maybe it's going on, it's on me. It's not that, with that local area, it's, it's failing, maybe it's going to fall and spring some lead. Beyond all, frankly, that number takes seven, please. So especially in this area, that means fairly small, except for local. The majority of it's going to get off the house.
But yeah, that's the end. If you go down, you know, you're going to take seven, you're not, you're not a problem.
Thank you very much. The, I want to ask you, what are the reasons behind the, they might be supporting that? Uh, I heard from the mayor, that, 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 uh, the water, the sewer, uh, gets water and sewer, uh, storm drain. So when we were talking about commercial properties that the builders, if somebody wants to make a building, they don't have to do it, it's timely, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think another, something else that would come to me here at home and a lot of the lawyers that we've got, I have a question. The comment about, there's been no water, there's been no trash, and there's been no pollution. And I think it's going to be a stream of the process. A zoning request is not performed currently, nor is it approved. Those taking place later on, they'll only get the names that are in, with the, the, off, fact, of some of those items. Those are the next steps that this is through. Um, and that's why I think it's actually revisionary law, because they are going to be required
I said, "Oh, you're quite an experienced..." Yeah, I started in paper and glider. I got hooked, started about twenty-four dollars a month. I started about twenty-five, six. They came up to like thirty-one to fifty-dollar a month. And they asked me to file it, but uh, so the average range for a guy is much less than seventy-five dollars. Thank you. It's a very skilled job. There's lots of people who are still in your labor, many as much as people that are very skilled jobs. Um, they take, they bear the job. Our average tenant here is, "Oh, you don't count my phone over." We've got phones, guys, and things like that. So, they take safety, like one safety and one service with the car stop. Thank you.
You talked about, you know, still a lot of things, right? That's not my expertise, but you know, there's... One of them is thought, I don't know. I should be having something, something, you know, on the stuff. As you know, your buying has changed over the last year or a while. Many before that, doing what you're now buying online, working more violent than retail stores just a year or two in a row. That happens down the line. When some of our retail businesses decide to restructure, then we need something else to, for impact resource. I think that means a funding company who decides once the force of an online buying could be a good idea. Uh, that most other time, impact resources would be, we're gonna say. You know, there's dualistic combined, the first, the only that needs the area, we, why not, um... We are not gonna have there as much for our students. That's when Edward did all of it. But then, he wanted either, and he was willing by the county. Those are all whole things that you are interested in doing. And again, if they're losing the trust of their group, they will be getting that hell of stuff. And we can go until we get in the trap. So, if these thoughts align, I would like to do one more thing to you, and to compare.
Thank you very much. First thing I'd like to do is thank all of the council for all their help. That, uh, it's not something that's taken in high way. And I appreciate all of your input, your questions, your comments, as well as all of those, um, citizens' concerns and, uh, that we receive. All the contacts I know, all of the, the council has received both, um, contacts, uh, before and after this issue. Um, I'm not going to labor and repeat, repeat everything that's, that's important. Uh, but I did want to recognize that this is a reverse dinner. So, if this, uh, this developer might not be able to fix this, this would revert to agricultural zones with, uh, someone else coming in, uh, potentially in some other way. Also, uh, um, there's been a lot said about the, uh, park revaluation and how they're all pretty sure or not. Um, those are all set by the county, and the city deposit grant doesn't have control over the park, how you, and that, so... But in those type of bands, uh, please refer all those comments to the neighborhood park department. Uh, no one has really mentioned, um, the lack of use that is right across the street from us. On the other side, I tell you, there is a separate gap, uh, makes topic for those. There's been no point on where the city funds, uh, that, apparently, nobody's liked, struck the headcount. So, I appreciate, I appreciate that, um, that, that is an actual need of a class. Also, a lot of things have changed in Bonner Springs since over the years. Uh, we used to have a very industrial, uh, piece right downtown. All of our groups were brought up on that frame, and a lot of the same, so, of that area. The next area of the, uh, neighborhood working story, we have one of those right on three miles. That unfortunately is past the goal, and there's, what is those parts? Uh, it makes the theory that those three blocks stories may be changing too. That little local waiting stories now, they have a farm structure of ours that makes parking, parking lot, and off-bridge to the mine. Now have that truck and van to our line, very busy to live with those things, this, 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 our community, so... Thank you, thank you. This truck we got at the intersection of K seven I seventy East, feminist youth, thoroughfare and motorcycle. Will convey that same, uh, more of that same users initially to all of our community. Can you hear what the comments on the meeting? I asked that one.
Mayor, the motion is to approve an ordinance to rezone approximately seventy acres at one-two-nine-zero-zero Speaker Road, one-two-nine-zero-one Speaker Road, and four-four-nine South one-hundred-and-thirtieth Street, Bonner Springs, Kansas, from A-one Agricultural District to I-two Heavy Industrial District. Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yeah.
Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Wood? Thompson? Kip? Gurley? Mayor, the motion passes.
I'll see you there. Stop that, Jack.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I didn't get it, I didn't get it. You want your ass, you guys, you guys. You guys. I get it.
Well, thank you all, that's something, um, if you want to go to the press, I expect, I'm seeing one second. At that time, um, I was in, in the March twenty-sixth. Um, in October twenty-five, we were starting in the book year. In October twenty-sixth, we'll be doing, doing work for, 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 for five years, which means, um, uh, part of the people's time. So, we always see this, and we have a time period, and a month before, we almost immediately ready to go to the border, um, before this. And to reduce that, um, uh, that, um, had a big issue with. If it's cleaning, it would not have been one of the problems. Really, we're going to use some of that, or like very, uh, surprise.